Hello and welcome to Candidate Night 2015 sponsored by Close Up Club. Tonight we welcome candidates for Board of Education in Lacy Township. Mr. Gary Vaccaro, Mr. Robert Claus, Mr. James Letelier, and Mr. David Silette. Four student panelists will each ask a question to the candidates and they will respond in a pre-selected random order. Mr. Vaccaro, you will answer first, this round with a question asked by Sarah Fedak.
Hi, my name is Sarah Fedak and my question is, during the 2015-2016 school year, the school district provided every high school student with a Chromebook for use in school and at home. Do you see this trend of individualized technology continuing if you are elected to the Board of Education? What actions would you take to continue or discontinue the one-to-one technology program?
Yes, I definitely see it continuing. I think it's very important that we train our students for their college and their future careers in technology. The Chromebooks, the laptops, the online learning, which also helps with better communication with the parents. We have the online portal, a great resource. My daughter's in 7th grade to check her grades and see how she's doing, better communication. But we need to keep advancing technology. There's technology we can look at, GIS technologies that are interesting for mapping that we might want to show the students. I think what we need to do, obviously it costs money for some of these things, I would talk to, work with the board and the staff, try to seek out grants where possible, reallocate funds, but I think it's a very important initiative. We are in the 21st century, we need to train our students properly for success. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Claus.
Thank you very much, Sarah. It's a good question, and I will let you know that I'm definitely in favor of the one-to-one technology. I think it's a very important step in improving the technology in our school district. I guess one thing we need to do is make sure we continue to provide ongoing training to the students and the teachers so that we get the most out of the investment that we've made in buying all these Chromebooks. I do look forward to a complete rollout of the, I don't know how far, I don't think I've heard how far they plan on going down in the grades, but I do believe that it's something that we should use in other schools. On a personal note, there are two interactions I have with this. One was the back-to-school night. I noticed that each one of the teachers of the classes that I went to were all excited about having these Chromebooks. They all mentioned it, they all talked about it, and they all showed us how they use it and how they can monitor students and keep an eye on everybody to make sure that nobody's doing anything they shouldn't be doing. But the other interaction that I had with it is my son is a sophomore right now at Lacy, and he brings it home every night, we charge it every night, and he's ready for school the next day. But the good thing is he doesn't have to carry that big book bag of books anymore, and everything that he needs is online. We check his assignments, there's nothing to miss anymore. He hands in his assignments through the Chromebook. I can't say enough good things about it, I think we should continue with it, and like I said, I think we should expand it to the other grades, and I agree with that.
Now, Mr. Letelier.
Yes, thank you. If you watch last year's debate, prior to the school district deciding to go out and get Chromebooks, I advocated going to tablets or laptops because my son went to private school and he had the benefit later in the grade school, in high school, and I watched him all through college, right on through his masters. Technology is a great resource, and having everything at your fingertips greatly improves your ability to learn and educate. The thing with the board, they have to stay focused on continuing and expanding by online e-textbooks instead of the paper textbooks, online testing, online quizzing, online assignments. Done right, it will be beneficial and cost-effective because as you move more towards technology, you save money on the cost of the paper books, the printing, and other lesson assignments that traditionally run off on photocopiers. So, yes, I'd like to see them expand. I think as the books go, your Chromebooks get older, I can see the district buying newer ones and filtering those down into the lower grades, so you're not wasting the technology because the lower grades are not going to be as, more as advanced as the high school, obviously. So, I would support it, I would want to see the board expand it, and I want to see other technology expand into the district too.
Now, Mr. Silette.
Well, concerning the one-to-one initiative with the Chromebooks, I attended a meeting with Mr. Zalinski in a small focus group. I just want to, I want to thank him and the people involved in getting the Chromebooks to the students. They did their due diligence, they had, they had asked every question possible, what could go wrong with the Chromebooks, how, how we can ensure them, how we can make sure that every student feels comfortable and takes care of their Chromebook. Huge supporter of the one-to-one initiative. I just want to say that 3% of the US jobs currently are all in the technology sector. That's 3%, that's a huge number. I think our students, learning to use technology at a young age, will help them move into college, expand on that, and possibly find jobs in the tech sector if they choose that field. The one thing I would do, I would love to see it make its way all the way down to the grade school level, possibly 3rd and up, 4th and up. I know that's a huge step right now, I feel that you're never too young to start learning technology. I know my kids, when they were younger, they could handle an iPad, an iPhone, I think we take that for granted, that possibly we should move that down to a lower grade in the future. I mean, we can't do it now. There was a lot of concerns about funding for the Chromebooks when we first brought that out, and I believe with time, if we can move that through to the lower grades, it'll help everybody in the technology, learning to learn with technology, and that's it.
Thank you. Quinn Baumgartner, last, the next question.
Hi, my name is Quinn Baumgartner, and my question is, the state of New Jersey requires that all students in grades 3 to 11 to be administered the standardized PARC exams. What is your opinion on standardized testing, and do you feel that they affect the students of Lacy?
Mr. Claus, with your response.
Thank you, Quinn. It's a good question, it's an important question. Standardized testing is a big part of just society in general today. Everybody's trying to gauge, I guess, the quality of education or whatever it is they're trying to test. I'd say that I'm not a big fan of the PARC test in general. I just saw today on the internet that, I believe it was 52% of the students in New Jersey from 3 to 11 did not pass it. I don't know what the expectations were, but I don't know that that's very good. What I know of it, I haven't taken the test, but what I've seen and what I know of it, it's a poorly designed and poorly implemented test. Last year when they rolled it out into schools, we had some trouble with it. It took too long. The time period that it took to take the test took away a lot of teaching time for the students to learn. Aside from that, you know, we weren't completely prepared with technology. I think in the future, as we go forward, there are two paths that we could take. One would be to continue to provide our feedback to the state on our opinions of the PARC. I believe they're down to about six states right now, plus DC, that are taking it, so I feel like it's kind of weaning its way out. But the other path, in case it picks up speed, we should, to answer along with the last question, we should continue with the one-to-one initiative and get the technology out to everybody so that we have the ability to take the test in a quick and effective way. Hope that answers your question.
Now, Mr. Letelier.
Thank you. I am not in favor of the PARC testing, we're Common Core. I think there's a mistake when legislators dictate to the education community on how to educate the children and students. And the problem with these type of tests, I discussed this last night at the board meeting, there's a current bill waiting to be signed into law that will prohibit the school districts from using a commercially developed testing for first grade, second grade, and kindergarten. At that level is when children are entering into the school system, you have to be able to test them and see where they're suited, whether, there's a lot of programs that we used to have that were cut such as transitional first grade or developmental kindergarten to assess what is a child old enough, mature enough to start kindergarten or wait a year. And certain tests like that and assessments are good because it helps not only staff but the parents make a well-informed decision. But the problem when they force these tests down and then you take away valuable classroom time, they mandate it, but there's no funding for the technology, it's those who had to take it, had to basically wait their time. Now, we do have the Chromebooks and if it continues, but again, how valuable, or how valuable is the PARC testing when students were able to opt out of it? So you don't have a true picture and a true comparisons. And that's one of the problems where you see SAT scores bounce all over, some years you have more students in a particular school take it, and some years you have less. So, when that happens, if your ranking's going to fluctuate as well. So, if you're going to have a standardized test to gauge New Jersey's education, it has to be statewide, and it has to be reasonable, that everybody has to participate and take it. Otherwise, really, you're not getting a true picture of the value of the test and how it's helping the students. So, there's a lot of discussion on it, there's going to be a lot more, and again, there's too many things legislators dictate without, I don't think, looking at what's going to be the final results. They're more interested in counting where their dollars are going instead of the value of the dollars that are being spent.
Now, Mr. Silette.
Quinn, could you ask that question one more time?
What is your opinion on standardized testing, and do you feel that they affect the students of Lacy?
Okay. Was there anything there about PARC? I'm just curious.
Yes, sir.
I know you said standardized testing, I was just wondering if you, because it's a good question, Quinn, I can handle it from here. First of all, any standardized test is obviously put in place to test the knowledge that you learn. SAT is a standardized test, PSAT. New Jersey ASK was a standardized test. And it's basically testing the knowledge of your school district. In regards to PARC, the PARC test was designed to test the Common Core initiative, to test on the Common Core initiative. So we're supposed to teach to the Common Core initiative. I don't know if everybody in the room or out there understands, Common Core was developed, it was developed so someone in New Jersey in the 3rd grade, if they were to move to Arizona, take a 3rd grade, and move, and move into a 3rd grade class in the middle of a semester, they should be reasonably in the same area, teaching the same subject, in the same subject, and they wouldn't fall behind. So, what the nation was trying to do was get everybody on the same page and try and teach the same subject, the same way, and the same information. Regarding PARC, from what I understand, last year in this school district, it took away a lot of time from the students, from their regular classes. It took a lot of time to initiate the test, to give the test. The one-to-one initiative, I'm sure will help facilitate, facilitate the test faster this year. However, with only six states and Washington DC still taking the PARC, I'm not sure where this is headed. I'm not sure if it's going to continue, if it's going to grow or decline. Unfortunately, the state mandates in New Jersey that we have to follow Common Core and take the PARC test. I'm not a fan of the PARC test for the reason that they're testing information, they don't even know what to do with the test information yet. They don't know how to apply it, so if you're asking me about regular standardized tests, some of them have a purpose. I could tell you, as a firefighter, after you get out of college, don't think the tests end, all right? Because tests, you'll take tests, depending on the field that you choose, for the rest of your life. For me to be promoted, I have to pass an exam. For state employees to get promoted, they need to pass exams. If you want certification in a certain field, you have to pass a standardized test and exam. So, in regards to the PARC test, I'm not a fan, I'm not a believer in it. But for standardized testing, that's, it's something we're going to have to live with for the rest of your life. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Vaccaro.
Thank you. Going back to my high school days, I never liked standardized tests. I was one of those students that seemed to do better in the classroom than the standardized test, and some students have problems with the standardized test, but they're a reality. I'm not a big fan of PARC, I'm going to be open-minded and see what happens with our test results, but it's not initiated across the country. There's problems with initiating initially with technology. But I do agree, it's, you know, I went to the meeting last night and Dr. Anthony brought up that we have to have a way to compare how our students doing, doing across the country, across the state. We can't leave it up to us to develop these tests. Right now, PARC is what we have. I agree with you, Common Core, my daughter, some of the questions she gets asked, I don't understand what Common Core, but that's what we have right now, what we have to use. I think the best thing we could do at this point is to see how the test results are. Some legislation is going to change, I've heard that the governor is eliminating Common Core, but let's see where we're going with this. I think that we have to have a method of testing our students to see how they're doing compared to everyone else. We can't not just ignore the PARC test, it's something that's a reality right now, it may not be there next year or the year after, but right now it's here, let's see how the test results come in, and this is where we have a way to compare how our students are doing, so we know they're probably prepared for college and career readiness. It's the best way to do that at this point, whether it's an SAT test, PSAT, but standardized tests are the best way to gauge how our students are doing across the state and across the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Caleb Velicky with the next question.
The topic of school spending and taxes has always been a controversial subject. Lacy Township has seen a rise in taxes and school spending in recent years, but a decline in overall student enrollment. What are your plans for the future of school spending, and how will that affect the taxpayers?
Mr. Letelier, with your response.
Yes. The district currently has over $40 million debt, which impacts the budget as well. You have to make debt payments, and there has been a decrease since 2004 of over 800 students in the population. The best thing for this board to do, and there are some people on the board willing to look that way, is to look at the education from kindergarten all the way to high school to make sure we have all the building blocks in place. And public education does cost, but there's ways to eliminate fat and waste. I did it back in the 90s when I was on the board, and yet we improved the quality of education. My concerns and the reasons for getting involved last year and this year was the fact that the decline in the rating of the school system as a whole, and not preparing kids as well as our peers are doing in other school districts for college and career readiness, is a true concern. And if you are a taxpayer and you're involved in this community and you're involved in education, as I was in the past, you understand the value that every dollar spent has to be spent properly and wisely to benefit your education. That's why I supported last year, everybody having a laptop or a tablet. I knew there's a large expense to that, but I know the benefit. So when you have something that's beneficial, it's going to help improve the quality of education, you can justify it to the public. But part of the biggest problem the town has is, one, that for years, three years as a matter of fact, the $8.2 million that was borrowed in excess that was needed for the solar panel was used to artificially keep the tax rate at zero increase. Now, this year we got hit with a 15% tax increase, and that's a major impact, $2,000 to me, $3,000 to my neighbor, a year. And when that comes, and it's such a surprise to people, because I tried to explain where they were going with their financing, I believe the solar panel project was a total fiasco. I think it was the biggest mistake this district has ever made. When you look at other communities like Central Regional, they rented the rooftops to a solar company and they get discounted electricity immediately. Here, we have to worry about where the market is with the S-Rex and everything else, and how long it's going to take. But the fact that we borrowed $8.2 million additional, approximately 42% more in interest than we should have, because the interest on those, the solar panels will cost this district $8.4 million to pay. That's wasting tax dollars that could be educating children, hiring proper staffing, making sure that we evaluate the classroom sizes for the early grades all the way up through high school. So, I support education, I don't support waste, and if you look at last year's audit, $438,000 additional money was hidden in the health benefit account and was needed for the district. There's money in there that could be cut.
Now, Mr. Silette.
Well, thank you, Caleb, for the questions. Listen, you're touching on a very touchy subject right now, it's a hot topic in town, it's, it's always going to be a hot topic. Listen, collected taxes in the township pay for the school system, that's how it works. It's a delicate balance. You have all your resources versus the taxes. So, you have to find ways, you have to find ways where you can, and I dare I say cut, but reduce spending in certain areas to help facilitate stabilizing taxes. I know one of our major, two of the major parts of our budget, our salary, teacher salaries, staff salaries, administrative salaries, and healthcare contributions, or, I'm sorry, healthcare costs, not contributions. I would like to seek out a way to possibly lower our healthcare costs for the district. Right now, I want to say we're self-insured, I don't think anyone out there is going to come in and offer us a great plan. So we have to educate our teachers and our staff on how to better, better work their insurance, that they can better understand it and not drive up costs. Like, for example, instead of going to your own doctor, if you were to go to the hospital for the same reason, the hospital charges a much higher rate, and if we could possibly educate our staff and our administration on how to better use their healthcare benefits, it would help reduce our costs in the long run and possibly get out of the healthcare plan that we're in now. You know, a lot of people out there are struggling right now, times are tough for a lot of people. Just walking to town and campaigning, you come across a lot of empty houses in town now. One of the main reasons is people believe their taxes are too high. You know what? If you believe that, then it's right for them. I would, I would just like to say that if I'm elected, I would like to come to the table and try and work with the Board of Education and the teachers and the staff here to try and reduce our costs and stabilize our taxes and not be such a burden on the, on the community. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Vaccaro.
Thank you. You know, I've been to several school board meetings and have said this a few times, as a board member, it's a matter of finding a balance. Because on one hand, you're trying to provide the best education you can for the students, yet you still are responsible for the taxpayer. So you can't just, you know, I've seen people stand up and say, "Cut 10%, add the budget each year." Well, you can't just make arbitrary cuts, nor can you just throw money at education. If we just, if the answer was just to keep throwing money at education and make the best education possible, Asbury Park Schools would be the best in the nation. It doesn't work that way. So you have to make sound fiscal decisions, we need to look at the budget and see where we can reallocate funds or cut funds in unnecessary programs. Doesn't necessarily mean cutting staff, but it means making decisions that are going to help the students have a better chance and better quality education while still giving the taxpayers their money's worth. One of the things I brought up, when things you see, is the superintendent has a contract where she gets miracle bonuses. Now, she can get up to $25,000 a year additional money, which equates to about a 15% salary increase. Now, no other staff member gets that, and most staff members get less than 2% increase. This monetary miracle bonus isn't required by law, and other fiscally prudent school districts have stopped that policy. That's, those are the things we need to look at, we are wasting money. Why are we giving someone an additional $25,000 miracle bonuses? Do your job. The same thing I brought up with salary caps, I think we have to start looking at setting some salary caps at the high-end salaries. We have a business administrator who makes over $200,000 a year, he's the highest paid in Ocean County. Now, I'm all for people making good salaries, you know, that they're paid equivalent to their, their peers, to their responsibilities, but as a Board of Education member, you have to recognize, how much can the district afford? We can only afford so much. In terms of healthcare, I've questioned our premium-to-loss ratio, which seems to be very high. I'm not sure how much education is going to help in that manner, I'm not sure if that premium-to-loss ratio is correct. I'm curious if it includes workplace injuries, or work, which is workers' comp, which have nothing to do with it, but that's something I will look into. There are companies that will come in and, as a free service, will do an analysis and look at which is a lower healthcare plan, but I think it is important, it is a big issue. But it's, that being fiscally responsible and making sure that you create a balance between providing students a high-quality education and being responsible to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Claus.
I'm sorry, Caleb, could you repeat the question for me? It's been a while.
What are your plans for the future of school spending and how will that affect the taxpayers?
So, regard with spending, obviously it comes from taxpayers' money, and it's, we're all taxpayers, so it's all something that's on our mind on a regular basis. It's tough to say right now how things are going to be a year from now. I'm sure we would all like to be able to say we're going to lower taxes, but the reality is that taxes don't normally go down. I think our job will be to effectively budget our expenses as much as possible, to do our best to at least maintain a level of funding that we need to use, much like what these other guys were talking about as far as insurance goes. From what I understand, our usage is higher than our premiums, so when we go to bid, we don't get anybody that's interested in working with us. So, one way that we can definitely cut a little bit of cost is we need to, we need to look through that, and we need to work with our folks that are on our benefits plan to learn different ways to use our benefits. We've had many conversations with many people about how we can do that, and I, I think it's something that is worth looking into and possibly implementing. During budget period, I believe that if we bring in better communication with the administrative folks that we work with in our district, I am sure that there are places that they don't need to spend money, or areas that they can cut from what they spend. I don't know how much that'll provide in a budget, but I think that's something we should be looking into as well. Well, we're, right now, we're, we have a good opportunity with our business administrator retiring and our superintendent being replaced. It's an opportunity for us to renegotiate contracts. Obviously, they need to be good enough for somebody to be interested in, we need to find good people, you do pay for what you get, but with some of the mistakes that might have been made in the past, it's an opportunity for us to be able to correct them. Between those three things, I think that, that would help. I don't know how much it'll help, but it'll help. Thank you.
Thank you. Isaac Edelhauser with the next question.
A modern teenager can, can become disconnected from the education system, feeling like the school, like school is simply just another stepping stone for college. What do you think are the factors that cause this disconnect, and how would you address the disconnect if you were to become a member of the Board of Education?
Well, Isaac, that's an interesting question. To be honest with you, high school is a crazy time in high school students' lives, all right? You've got puberty, raging hormones, and, you know, people are making friends and some people have trouble making friends. To be honest with you, it, it could be tough on a lot of students, and the one thing I would hope is that there's clubs or some type of inter-curricular activity where you can go and feel comfortable and possibly relate to someone and not feel... where you can go and feel comfortable and possibly relate to someone and not feel so For the most part, for some people, high school is like the greatest time of their life, and for some, it isn't. And I can understand both. I can understand that. I would hope that through guidance, our guidance system, if someone were to feel left out or, you know, disconnected from school, they could go to talk to them, possibly, and I'm not saying get help, but just try and be open and discuss it and maybe make connections with other people that feel the same way as you do. Other than that, I really think I would have to really, excuse me, I would really have to do some work on that and get back on. That's a tough question for me. I'm sorry. That's it.
Mr. Vaquero with your response.
Yeah, it is a very interesting question. I, you know, agree with some of the things Dave said. You know, high school is tough. I mean, you're finding your way, what you like, what you don't like. You have the cool kids and not cool kids, the jocks, you know, all that stuff. I had in high school when I was nineteen seventies, in the seventies. So I think it's a matter of first finding what you like and who likes it too that maybe you can connect with, who you feel comfortable with. It doesn't have to be a large group of people. It could be one-on-one. And having clubs or someone you could speak to that can help you if you feel disconnected to work with, work with you on that, I think it's very important. We see a lot of tragic events that occur because kids do feel disconnected, and that shouldn't occur. And I think we should do everything possible if, you know, if we see our student population is feeling disconnected, because that shouldn't, that shouldn't happen. We want you to learn. We want you to feel, have a good time in high school. It's one of the best times in your life to be able to try to make new friends, to find out who you, who you link with. You know, you're not going to be, and it's also understanding life that, you know, you're not going to be necessarily liked by everybody. You'll have jobs and times where some people don't like you, some people do, you know, and it's, it's not that there's anything wrong with you, it's just because that's the nature. Everybody has different feelings. So I think it's really, I think the best thing, I guess, in answering it is that we need, if you feel that way, we should have an avenue in the school. You have counseling, you have somebody you can talk to openly and honestly, and it's confidential where you feel that way. And if you don't feel, talk to your parents or someone, you know, a therapist or a counselor can help you with it, because I just think it's really important. I mean, it's sad to hear when kids feel disconnected. I mean, it's tough to make friends, and high school should be fun, you know? There's a lot of pressure with tests and everything else, but have fun, you know? So, thank you.
Mr. Claus with your response.
Hate to say the same things again, but it is a difficult question, and it's something that I remember as a student, you know what, it does happen. I think, you know, so growing up and looking back at school, if I could encourage all the kids in school to take part in any of the after-school activities, if you're in the club, you're in performing arts, athletics, any of these other activities that they have after school, I think that makes an experience out of school. You start to understand that it's not just learning, you know, sitting at a desk and learning, but it's also learning interaction with other people, learning, learning what you like. You know, when my kids were young, we, well, they're still young, but when they were younger, they, we had them play every sport, every activity, you know, in elementary school, you're in the band, you're in the choir, you're doing plays, you're doing all kinds of things. I think everybody, all the kids in school should try as many of the activities as they can, especially at a younger age, to see which ones they like. Then what happens is, you know, like, my son started out playing every sport there was, and we kind of, over time, whittled it out to the sports that you like, but maybe, you know, shouldn't really be doing, and to other sports, say, you know, you're good at and you can excel at. Not just sports, though. I mean, you pick up an instrument. Some kids might like to play the guitar. Start a band, you know, those sorts of things. Try to find other, other activities in school that you really enjoy. High school is, when you're in high school, it seems like that's everything, but it is only four years. And, you know, nowadays, people live till eighties, nineties, so it's a really small time period in your life. They should think kids should try to take advantage of it as much as they can, get the most out of it they can. If they do feel disconnected, there should be people that they can talk to, to talk through their problems, to make sure that, you know, they, they might not even know everything that's out there that they can get involved in, and there might be something that a counselor can open their eyes to. But I would hope that any, anybody that does have that feeling of disconnect, I would hope there's someone there to point them in the right direction, to help them out, help them find what they're looking for so they can be happy.
Mr. Lattelier, your response.
It's a very interesting question, and it's a very important question. My nearly thirty years in law enforcement, I've dealt with a number of tragedies, and when students feel disconnected, that's a crucial sign. We've seen around this country some very horrific mass murders on campuses and schools, and the common thing was, well, he's a loner, he's by himself, you know? Those are early warning signs. We need to have available to students and staff the proper psychiatrists, sociologists to help deal with these things. We make sure that we have things, but again, if the school, and I'm an advocate for this, years ago, my wife and I had a 4-H Club where it was an equestrian. Not everybody's into football, baseball, but we had that going. In the eighties, I started a police athletic league, not to run organized sports, but try to build a youth center in this town, and I was met with severe political opposition. There are needs, but if you have, and I would support this as a board member, and I would encourage the board, the future boards to do, if the school's not offering, everything doesn't have to cost money. Everything doesn't have to be a sanctioned program where you can start a club after hours, whether it's a video game chess club or video, you know, anything to reach out and give students. But the most important thing is for the student body and the staff to realize that when you have someone who feels disconnected and they're loners and they're out there by themselves, you've got to try to reach out to them or at least reach out to professionals who could speak to these students, and it's important, because as much as, you know, I, like other people, love playing sports and stuff, you have to have the availability. And I think the school and I think the community has some great organized sports programs, but there's nothing for the kids after school. There's no center they can go to. But I would encourage you and the student population to look out for those individuals. I try to help identify them, try, try to bring them in. You know, one of the things we've done in law enforcement throughout the country is the anti-bullying, and it's making some impact, but it's not enough. It's everybody's responsibility, every student, every teacher, every staff, every law enforcement officer, everybody in the community to reach out, because otherwise, we're going to see tragedy. And it's not just the shootings. You have the kids that take the drugs, commit suicide. It's a problem way above my expertise, but I see the sad results of it too often, and I would encourage everybody to look at that, and it's a great question.
Thank you. At this time, the candidates will be given the opportunity to give a closing statement. Mr. Vaquero, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. First, you guys all ask great questions. Now, I've been a resident of Lacey Township for over fifteen years, and I am very proud to be a member of this community. But as a taxpayer and parent, I am extremely concerned in the direction the Board of Education has taken our school district. Our property taxes continue to go up, yet we've seen poor school ratings, declining staff morale, a downgrade in credit rating, and questionable fiscal management. I'm not going to belabor the point about the solar panel fiasco, but just to say it has unnecessarily increased our debt, and it's been openly criticized by the state and has become a lesson learned for other school districts on poor fiscal decision-making. The parents, taxpayers, students, and employees deserve better. We deserve better. You deserve better. Jim and I are running to provide the leadership needed to move this school district in the right direction. First, we need to instill some fiscal sanity, and I talked about the superintendent Merit Goals, twenty-five thousand dollars extra, up to twenty-five thousand dollars extra a year. It's not required, no other staff member gets that. Putting some salary caps, having, you know, giving people fair equitable pay, but recognizing the district can only afford so much. And personally, as a parent of a seventh grader who will be entering high school, I'm concerned as many parents that I've spoken to about the high school's poor rank and rating. For example, the New Jersey Department of Education recently rated the high school lagging in performance in college and career readiness. Our SAT scores are still, still ranked below the New Jersey average and in some cases, the nation's average. And as a result, parents are considering using their child's college fund money to send their kids to a high school outside of the district. That's not acceptable. We need to do a better job of preparing our children for success. Jim and I have set a goal to provide high-quality, affordable education and to make our districts one of the top districts, not only in the county, but in the state. It's a, it's a tough goal, but we believe it can be done. But the first step in correcting a problem is that you have to recognize there is a problem. Status quo, same old, same old policies are not going to get the job done. We will seek balanced solutions to provide our students with high-quality education while giving the taxpayer a return on their investment. And balanced meaning, as I discussed before, it doesn't mean just making arbitrary cuts or throwing money at education. It means instituting sound fiscal, well-thought-out, smart fiscal policy to achieve our goal. Finally, Jim and I are committed to responsibly managing our schools, and we will fight for all stakeholders, the taxpayers, parents, students, and employees, so you are provided with the high-quality, affordable education you deserve in Lacey Township. Thank you for your time, and Jim and I humbly ask for your vote on November third. Thank you.
Mr. Claus, your closing statement, please.
Yes. Thank you, guys, close-up group. We appreciate the opportunity to get up here and say our piece. It's important. I hope people sit down and watch this. It's important for people to learn what they need to know. But in closing, I'd like to say that I'm a graduate from Lacey Schools. I remember what it's like to walk down the halls in Lacey, to sit in the seats, to play in the sports, to represent the school as a student. I'm running for Board of Education with Dave Silette because as a Lacey alumni, I feel that I, I know what this school needs and what these teachers and faculty needs in a good leadership, and I believe that we have what it takes. Education is a bit of a balancing act. On one side, you have the teachers, you have the students, you have the schools and the facilities. On the other side, you have the township and the taxpayers. As a board member, Dave and I will be dedicated to finding the best way to create the balance between the schools and the township. I've lived in this town for forty years. I remember when there was one traffic light in town. I remember Mrs. Sherwood as our nurse, excuse me, our nurse in the Fort Quiver School. And I have two children that, one still goes to school here, he's a sophomore, and he's loving every minute of it. He's enjoying the education, he's learning a lot, and he's doing well. The teachers are really doing a good job. My daughter is a recent graduate from Lacey, and now she's a freshman at Purdue University. So put your mind to it, do hard work, and you can get to good places. As a candidate, I have no conflicts, nothing that will prevent me from negotiating or voting on any of the topics. I was given a great education here, and I believe that we owe it to the children to offer them the same or better in every aspect. Education, vocation, performing arts, athletics, everything. I work hard every day that I'm on the board to make decisions that are in the best interest of the schools, the students, and the township. For me, this is not a stepping stone to any other position. I'm only interested in schools. Dave Silette and I were interested in the past, but we're not obsessed with it. We'll learn from it, and we'll use that to grow and improve the district every day. We're focused on the future and the idea of making our schools the best they can be, and as Lacey residents, we owe it to the schools, and we owe it to the town and the children. Our school's students and teachers are the pride and the future of our school district. They need the support and encouragement from their leadership, and as a township, we should all be a part, we should all be united to improve every aspect of our town. Working together is the only way we'll get it done. So Dave and I, we humbly request your support. November third, positions number one and number four, Claus and Silette. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lattelier, your closing statement, please.
Yes. First of all, I want to thank the close-up club for having us here tonight. I think you did an excellent job. Your questions were spot-on and very important to this whole debate of where we go. But I'd also like to thank the other candidates and my running mate, because this is one of the first elections that has been run by proper forum. There's no personal attacks out there. They're all gentlemen. I've known Rob most of his life. I watched him grow up and go through the school system. But when you're running a school district, you have to balance the needs of the student, the staff, and the community. We have over eight hundred foreclosures in town. There's vacant storefronts, vacant homes. Campaigning, I believe everybody up here would tell you, I haven't walked on a block that didn't have two or three for sale signs on. People are moving out. So while we want to keep the best staff we can, you have to look at how much we can afford. And you can afford more when you cut waste and you don't put the system into debt, as I talked about the solar panel project. By the time that's all done, paid off, twenty-nine million dollars. Could have been used for a lot of education, but, and it could have gave a lot of relief to taxpayers. But I've got to go back to your question about the disconnect of students. To me, that's everything what this board is supposed to be here for, to make sure that doesn't happen. And I may shock some people. I was disconnected, and I quit school. I was a high school dropout. And found myself going down the wrong path in my life early on, and it was a street cop that sort of kicked me and hit me with the nightstick and took me in and changed my world around where I realized the value of education, went back, got the GED, cleaned up my act, started pursuing a career in law enforcement, went on to get my undergraduate and my graduate degrees, because one person made a difference in my life at the crucial time, and that's what I'm trying to say. Anybody here can make that one disconnect, reach out to that person, because it can change. Now, I didn't plan to talk about my personal life, but I have to respond to that, because that is so crucial, not just in Lacey Township, but across this nation. And I really think that we as a community, and I think any four of us getting on the board is going to add a positive thing. Obviously, I hope that me and my running mate, Gary, for Carrow wins, but that this, if you watch the school board meetings, if you attend the school board meetings, the disconnect between the members of the board, the argument, I have never seen it in all the years that I've been in this town, and I'm one of the original peoples that supported breaking away from central regional. So I've been here since this district was built. So I want, once again, thank you for the opportunity, encourage everybody to come out and make a well-formative vote. Thank you.
Mr. Silette, your closing statement, please.
I just want to share a little something with you. The reason I ran for Board of Education, or I'm running for Board of Education, I was attending Maury Knight at Lenoka Harbor School last May for my second-grade daughter, Morgan. I witnessed how passionate, energetic, and thoughtful the teachers were, not only for my daughter, but for my sons, who had previously attended Lenoka Harbor School as well. They were genuinely concerned with all my children and engaged them in conversation. And I felt really good about that. I felt good to be there and to see the genuine concern and the energy and the passion of the teachers. And then you hear, you hear things, you hear negatives. You hear negatives about the school district here. Listen, I'm from a school district where I grew up. I would love for it to be just like this right here, right now, but I'm not saying that. I'm saying we can do better here. But if you compare our school district to other school districts, I'll tell you what, I love Lacey Township. I love being here, I love living here, and my children love living here. I think my running and Rob's running can make a difference in the school district, on the school board. There's a lot of things happening right now. We're at a major crossroads. We're looking for a new superintendent. We're looking for a CEO of the school district. We're looking for a new business administrator, and we're also working, our teachers are working without a contract. I feel in the search for the new superintendent and business administrator, we have to seek out qualified, passionate, and motivated applicants that will embrace our new created strategic action plan. We also have to find someone that's going to continue and embrace our technological advances we've made and enhance them and move on in the district. There's a lot of good things happening in this district. If you hear people bad-mouthing this district, all you need is a bad reputation. That's all you need, and people start to get doubts. Lacey Township is a great town. I could have lived anywhere in the state of New Jersey. I work an hour from here. I drive an hour to work and an hour back because I love this township. If you look around, the parks, the schools, this school is immaculate. All the schools are immaculate. All the schools are immaculate. I feel, Rob and I feel the same way about the township. And we're not saying we want to keep it exactly the same. We want to make it better, and we're going to address those negative issues. We're going to address them, but we're also going to accentuate the positives. There's a lot of great things here. Close Up Club, thank you very much for inviting us here, and thank you for your questions. Extremely generous of you. Mr. Zalinski, thank you for having us. Mr. O'Sullivan, thank you. I just want to close with this. I mean, I also think there's things we need to work on. All right, we need to stabilize taxes. I understand that. And continue to improve our schools. I think we need to seek out a better relationship with the Township Committee where we can work together to solve so many issues. I know there's been grumblings between back and forth recently. I think we need to squash that. And I think what Mr. Lattelier and Mr. Vicaro were talking about earlier with the disconnect here, not disconnect, but the discord in the board, we need to squash that. We need to start working and moving forward and working together to get things done. Let's get the teachers' contract taken care of. Let's get it out of our hair. Let's find a great superintendent. Let's find the new business administrator that knows what he's doing. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight's event and to our viewing audience.
I can't keep going. Just get out and vote November 3rd. Thank you very much.
Please vote Tuesday, November 3rd. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)[1765.28]